Well, I want to welcome everybody. No additions or changes to the agendas, so we need a motion.
Motion to close.
Okay, motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Onto the consent agenda. We've got city council minutes, regular city council meeting minutes, September 11th, 2023, special city council meeting minutes of August 30th, 2023, minutes of boards and commissions, light and water commission minute, meeting minutes, September 18th, 2023, cross-cultural advisory committee meeting minutes of July 18th, 2023, and financial statements, municipal liquor store income statement for the period of January 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2023, Olson Park Campground's statement of revenue and expenditures, budget and actual for the period of January 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2023, Fieldhouse statement of revenue and expenditures, budget and actual for the period of January 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2023, and bills payable. Motion to accept the agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, thank you. We'll start with the proposed ordinance prohibiting cannabis use in a public place. The Minnesota legislature approved the possession and use of cannabis that became effective on August 1st. Minnesota statute 63 authorizes local units of government to adopt an ordinance establishing a petty misdemeanor offense for a person who unlawfully uses cannabis flower, cannabis products, low, lower potency hemp edibles, or hemp-derived consumer products in a public place, provided that the definition of a public place does not include the following: private residence, including the person's curtilage or yard. So don't mess with my curtilage.
What is a curtilage?
Basically, you yard in any outbuildings if you have a little shop building or something there. Private property, not generally accessible by the public unless the person is explicitly prohibited from consuming the various things that were mentioned earlier. And the final one is the premises of an establishment or event licensed to permit onsite consumption. We attached as exhibit 1s an ordinance prohibiting the use as defined above. Fines for petty misdemeanors may not exceed $300 per offense. And just as an explanation, even though the county has passed similar ordinance, there was unknown answers regarding the jurisdiction or authorization if city police officers could enforce a county ordinance. So it was decided that we are going to bring forward our own ordinance for within the city limits of Worthington. Should council concur with our recommendation, it may approve the first reading of the proposed ordinance and establish the petty misdemeanor fine, as noted earlier, cannot exceed $300 per offense. So if you are in favor of passing this ordinance, we'll also have to establish the level of fine.
Where does this draft come from? And have we looked into other communities, what they may be doing so far?
As the, the ordinance is the common one that is coming from a number of municipalities and also the one that Nobles County passed. It seems like there is one basic ordinance that was put out that everyone is, is adopting. Now, I saw one St. Louis Park was in that was really got carried away, but.
Chris.
How's this compared to the use of alcohol in public?
Well, we don't allow alcohol in the parks. We do, 3-2.
By permit or just every day?
Just allowed during park hours.
And then there are.
We allow smoking in parks, smoking cigarettes.
There probably isn't any sign, any joke.
No.
And are there other fines for drinking in public, like if it was hard liquor or other than?
Hard liquor, it would be.
You do?
Yes, but.
What would be the fine?
I don't know what that fine is.
You don't know?
No.
Okay.
No, for hard liquor, but malt beverages and 3-2 are allowed.
Anybody else have anything?
I think this is similar to some of the, some of the things I've seen in other cities. We passed something last December that said people can't sell it in Nobles County. Is that correct for one year?
No, we did not.
We didn't.
The county did.
The county did, yes.
And nobody's asked to sell it in?
It's, well, no one can get licensed to sell it until the state issues a license and they're not intending to issue a license till January of 2025.
I think the only, they have, what, two depositories or dispensaries, whatever the heck they call them, and they're reservation-based. Right now in the state, I think, is the only, Red Lake and.
Tribal.
Yeah, they're, they're on reservation properties. There's one in Red and someplace, there's another one someplace else, I believe. Those are the only, as far as I had heard, two that are up and running.
Are we, we anticipate, and I know it's kind of off the topic a little bit, are we anticipating creating some type of regulation on this before 2025? Or just following what the state is doing?
Well, the state statute mandates that cities with a population over 12,500 cannot deny a dispensary license. That you have to have, we would have to have, allow at least one. We could limit it to one, whatever council may decide. So under, it's legal to possess, it's not legal to buy at this, at this point in Minnesota.
Legal to possess, legal to use. What state, are there any state offenses that can be upheld now by our local police?
Only if they exceed the possession limit. And if you're buying or selling, that is.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no use laws to date that the state has implemented that are enforceable by local police?
No.
But they have made it legal?
This is really, most of the cities are approaching this from the idea of public health, their public nuisance, that if you're in a park or walking down the sidewalk, that you may not want to be exposed to people smoking marijuana, or your kids, or grandparents, whoever.
This just helps law enforcement enforce on a better angle than relying on a county.
It's, use in public has already been banned throughout Nobles County. The, until it, well, it, that ordinance has gone into effect in all public places in Nobles County. The unknown or the confusion is if someone is violating the county's ordinance, could only a Nobles County deputy or a Nobles County law enforcement enforce that ordinance as opposed to our city law enforcement?
Are you looking for two motions here, one to accept the, or deny the ordinance, or just?
Do you need to know the fine amount at this point?
They're going to have to decide, but that's going to have to be a separate ordinance.
Separate ordinance, okay. All right.
Wait, I almost just feel, I, there's so many unknowns as to what the state stuff is going to be on this that it almost seems premature.
A lot of states are doing it.
Absolutely.
What's that? Yeah. You can see that the restrictions the state put on are the three noted in the, in the case item, and they're also spelled out in the ordinance. Those are the only places where it's, where we cannot prohibit otherwise. According to the state ordinance, it's not allowed in a public place. Those public places are specifically spelled out as schools, nursing homes, just some very specific venues where you would not be, that constitute, under the state's definition of a public place. Our parks, our streets, our, anywhere out in the open, it would be, according to the state statute, it is permissible to smoke there. But now with Nobles County's ordinance, it would not.
I do think there's going to come a time when these definite, things are going to have to be changed and.
Be revised.
And it's probably going to be in 2025 then, when we have to look at it and say, okay, parks, you know, think, places where we're encouraging people to be outside, is that a place where it is permissible? But I think for right now, I think, given that this is what the county has said, I think it makes sense. I do think it's going to be something that will be revisited within the next couple of years, definitely.
I'm not hearing any action.
Yep. Do we, have a motion on this?
Kind of agree with Elena. It's, seems a little premature. Is it a starting point? And then we're going to have to revise it?
Just helps law enforcement, I think, is the biggest issue, I think, is helping kind to have some structure right away. Motion?
The penalty that's listed in, in section four there, is that the one that needs to be defined?
You'll have to define that, but we'll have to among the administrative fines ordinance to add that to it.
And we'll just have to do some research from other cities of what they're doing, or, or even the county of what they're doing as well.
It just can't be over 300.
What's that?
It just can't be over 300.
Oh, I see, sure.
So that, like, smoking right now is not allowed in public places. So would this just be considered smoking?
Well, the Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act covers smoking as, and this is included in that. What Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act does not cover is outdoor spaces.
And there's places that still do enforce, this is the only, like at the racetrack, they just have a designated couple spots where you can smoke as well, even outside. Questions, concerns?
I'd say this is.
I'd like to, I, I would like to entertain a little more time. I don't know that I'm, I'm not willing to put it on a table of any time, but we don't have to, I, I don't know that I'm ready to act today until I make sure that we're kind of in pace with what everybody else is doing now that I can completely see the verbiage and have asked some of the questions, heard some of the other comments, if it's next meeting or whatever. I'm willing to bring it back up, but I would like to read over it and kind of take a look. I think, as you've said, some of the state stuff and the county stuff are already there to be enforceable, not necessarily by our local police, but in a two-week period, I don't know that the world's changing any more than it already has, which we're unfamiliar with to just look at the verbiage of this, do a little research as to what other communities have and are doing, because from what I've heard, there's still tons of questions out there as to who, how, and what. And from what I've heard from the local law enforcement anyways, the, other than blatant lighting up in a public place and things like that, they're uncertain as to what, where, and who they can enforce anything at the current anyway, because there's very few measurables have been given on any of this as to what there is out there. It, it's just so fresh and new and unbelievable that they make it legal without having a basis, standard of guideline from the state to start. I just shake my head and wonder. So with any infractions that would happen without this, now is this going to be tried in county court instead of city without this adoption currently?
Yeah, it would be a violation of county ordinance.
Until we would accept something of our own, okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with Chad, though. I would like to wait a little bit because I don't want this to have any adverse effects. Like if someone medicinally has a prescription for marijuana use and then by us saying, no, you can't leave your employer, which says, no, you can't smoke here, but you can go and drive somewhere else in park, where they currently can do that now, and maybe law enforcement knows that, where as soon as we put this in place, does that change that for them to get a form of what they view as medicine? So I just, I want to make sure that we, we aren't doing anything without thinking it through fully and hearing from people in the community.
We can wait till the state brings on a director of the Office of Cannabis Management.
New one. Okay, so what I'm hearing then is we'll table this for now then until.
All right, we'll move on to the comprehensive financial report. We have Abby Schmidt with Abda with us. She is going to present the city's 2022 annual comprehensive financial report.
Yes. Do you want to pull it up on the big screen?
There we go. And there's also a monitor right in front of you there.
Yeah, we're not, we're not blank staring at you. They're actually, sometimes it's easier to.
I'm glad you let me know.
Yeah.
Like Steve said, my name is Abby Schmidt. I'm a manager out of the Mankato office in the Government Audit Group. So I'll be, just be going through this PowerPoint. It's, it really highlights all of the high points and things we think you should know for the 2022 audit. There is the big audit report available if you have any more in-depth questions, but we just like to touch on some of the highlights for the year. So I'll start by going through our audit opinion and our responsibility as auditors, and then we'll get into the general fund and other governmental fund results, your enterprise funds, and then throughout, there are some key performance indicators comparing the city of Worthington to some of your peer groups. So as auditors, we're required to issue an opinion on your financial statements, saying they are materially correct and stated. We did issue an unmodified or clean opinion. We are also required to do some testing around Minnesota legal compliance, so that's things like contracting and bidding, collateral coverage, et cetera. There were no, we didn't note any instances of non-compliance there. And then because the city expended more than $750,000 in federal funds in aggregate across all programs, we were required to do a single audit, which is just testing one of those programs. We tested the PFA Clean Water Program in 2022, and we didn't note any instances of non-compliance there either. Just a couple audit findings to note. So we did assist in a few material audit adjustments, just some adjustments to make sure that the financials are materially stated correct. We worked with Deb on those. And then an internal control finding related to inter-fund transfer approvals. So those should really, unless they're budgeted, be run through council via resolution. So just something that we worked with Deb and Steve on getting approved in the future. Getting into your general fund, this graph is comparing your budget, which is that top yellow line, to your unassigned and assigned fund balance, fund balance in the general fund, which is the orange line. And then the black is the city's policy, which is to make 35% to 50% of next year's budgeted expenditures in fund balance. You can see a drop in 2022. This is really due mainly to the timing of the American Rescue Plan Act and when that was recognized, but just something to keep on, an eye on as now you're on the lower end of that policy. So as your budget increases year over year, you want to make sure your fund balance reserves go that way as well, just so you keep that minimum of 35% of fund balance. This is a look at your general fund budget to actual. So the, your final budget was, is in the left-hand column, your actual being that middle column. You will see your revenues were below budget. It, it's been a trend across all cities in '22 where there was temporary loss on investments, just to mark those down to market, but we expect those to bounce back. And then you also budgeted for ARPA dollars in the general fund, but some of those were spent in other funds, so recognized in those other funds. Your expenditures were also below budget. There were a few departments with less personnel costs than budgeted, but the majority related to capital outlay costs being budgeted for higher than happened in '22, mostly related to a land purchase that didn't go through until 2023. So that's kind of where you see that variance. All in all, the general fund did have a positive net change in fund balance of around $230,000. Here's a snapshot of your general fund revenues by type for the last three years. Nothing major to note. You can see intergovernmental drop, dropping year over year. It really depends on one-time grants, and especially since 2020, those COVID-related grants kind of not being, kind of drying up a little bit. So there were more of those in 2020, but nothing, nothing of concern. Here's a look at your taxes specifically. So this is a key performance indicator. So Class III cities, which are cities greater than 10,000, so that includes like New Ulm, St. Peter, Marshall, Fairmont. Cities of those size are in orange. Other cities in Nobles County are in yellow, and then the city of Worthington is in black. So you can see that there is a slight increase in the tax rate in '22, but discussing with Deb and Steve, this is anticipated and has dropped down in '23 to the more comfortable mid-50% range. But on the flip side, your taxes per capita is increasing, but it's a good sign to see, even though that's increasing, your tax rate has been pretty level. So really nothing of concern. We just like to see how you compare, and you're right, kind of in the middle of both those peer groups in both areas. Your general fund expenditures by type, overall, nothing of concern. The only thing that jumped out a little bit was culture and rec in 2022, which is, can be attributed to costs related to the Minnesota Aging Grant that was received. So revenues would have been received, but then the expenditure is on the flip side. So that's where that kind of jump comes from. Any questions on the general fund? Awesome. Moving on to the special revenue funds. So that top graph just compares your fund balance or kind of what's remaining in that fund at the end of '22 compared to '21. Just a few things I want to point out. The Recreation Fund did drop to a deficit. This was due to some large capital projects. The city had a sales tax to cover some of these expenses, but it sounded like a lot of those projects came in over budget. So that's why you see that change there. And then a new fund, the Private Development Assistance Spending Plan Fund. This was money transferred over from a TIFs district, gives the city a little bit more leeway with how, how you choose to spend it. Some will be transferred back to, to do a TIF project, but the majority will be used to assist in the multifamily market rate facility in the future. Capital project fund balances, you'll notice, kind of the biggest thing I wanted to point out is the improvement construction was spent down, a decrease of around 3.1 million. This was planned to internally fund some projects, so nothing of concern. It sounds like bonding in '23 will help kind of recoup some of that to be able to, to internally fund projects in the future as well. A look at your debt service, so this is just your governmental debt. It doesn't include any of your enterprise funds, and it looks at the payments for the next, planned for the next 10 years. There aren't really any bonds dropping off, so just something to keep in mind with new bond, with new bonding, it'll likely raise debt, the debt levy, since there's not really one dropping off to replace. So just something to be aware of, it looks pretty flat over the next 10 years. Onto the enterprise funds. So for each of the enterprise funds, the top graph will compare your operating receipts in orange to your operating dispersments and debt payments in the yellow and black. So for water, you are generating enough with your operating receipts and your charges for services to cover those dispersments, and pretty much anything that the gap between those payments and receipts is used for reinvesting in capital infrastructure. The bottom graph is going to compare your actual cash, which is the orange, to what we calculate as a minimum target cash balance. So it's basically what you owe next year for debt plus six months of your operating costs. Just a, just a figure to, to make sure if you need to continue running, if something were to happen on receipt. So plenty of cash reserve, like I said, to be invested in capital in the future. Municipal wastewater. So you can see the debt payments in '22 kind of being new there. That's with the PFA note, those payments started. So it did shrink quite a bit of that margin of operating cash receipts. Something to keep in mind when you do rate increases, that debt payments might increase even further when the final draws are made on that PFA. But you do have a solid cash reserve, as you can see down below in this fund. The electric fund, operating receipts are going up accordingly with operating dispersments. There was a, a decrease in cash of around $975,000, but that was due to some larger capital projects. Again, above that target, no major concern. Your receipts are covering your dispersments as they should. Your industrial wastewater facility, so costs have been creeping up, which caused a bit of a shift in the operating dispersments versus receipts. So you can see there was some spending down of cash. Just keep in mind for future capital needs, this fund is, is pretty much break even typically, so any additional capital needs is going to spend down that cash. Your stormwater management, nothing of concern here either. You have plenty of kind of leeway or gap in your operating receipts, so cash has been growing for future capital needs and reinvesting in those in the future. Looking at your street lighting fund, kind of a similar story. Your cash is growing around $50,000 each year, and that does, that's even with $165,000 transferred to the general fund every year. So this fund is healthy, just keep that in mind when you're looking at rates, that you are generating about $50,000 each year, even with that transfer. are generating about $50,000 each year even with that transfer. The airport, some of the increase in the operating costs are going to be reimbursable as just kind of the timing of grants and things and when those come in. You did spend down some cash, but again, state and federally funded, kind of depends when you actually get that cash. So, I mean, generally, airport funds aren't really generating break even, but you'd see in '21 you were pretty close, and then '22, like I said, some of those one-time reimbursable costs put you where your dispersments are above your receipts. Cable television, not much to note here. It's a break even fund, so it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, nothing of concern. We didn't see any issues with this fund. And then your liquor, your liquor store fund is doing really well. It cash flowed around $80,000 in '22, and that's been a trend for the last three years. And it also has allowed for a $275,000 yearly transfer to the general fund, so this one's operating very well and helping with some of those general fund costs as well. Any questions on the enterprise funds? Perfect. Just a quick look at your internal service funds. Really, the only thing to note is that the Safety Promotion Loss Control Fund has an annual transfer to the general fund, but really, these operate internally to fund different programs internally, so not much to note there. Here's a look at your debt. So the first graph being the long-term debt per capita. You can see that big jump in '22, the big PFA loan, I think around $10 million, was drawn on in '22. So your long-term debt per capita is on the higher end compared to your peer groups. But on the flip side, your debt service expenditures as a percent of your total expenditures is still within, not too far above other cities in Nobles and below the other Class III cities. So, well, yes, your debt went up, your actual payments per year aren't out of line with your peer groups. And then lastly, just to look at your overall expenditures compared to your peer group. The first is your operating expenditures on the list, on the left. You're pretty much break even with all your peer groups, nothing concerning there. On the right-hand side, you are a little bit higher on the capital end, but there's a little bit more infrastructure. It's one of the bigger cities in Nobles County, so we kind of anticipate the capital needs being higher. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Is there anything, yeah, is there anything cleanup-wise that we could be doing? To put it even in a more straightforward phase?
Yeah, so the partner on the team, Tom, and I met with Steve and Deb, and we definitely talked about a few areas. I think we cleaned up a lot this year. This is our first year as auditors, so just some things that were harder than they needed to be, I guess, to put it that way. So already done a lot of cleanup there. Nothing really major in how you're operating, just some of those different point of view as us being new auditors, looking at how you bond and how some of those enterprise funds are running, but really nothing concerning, more just digging in as new auditors and figuring out how you guys operate and some of our suggestions.
Yeah, it gets a bit jaded when you look at compared to other Nobles County cities because there's nothing, I mean.
Right, you're kind of the hub of Nobles County.
Yeah, we're 10 times everything else.
Yep, and we also discussed, we know Steve has a list of peer group or specific cities, and that's definitely something we can look at in the future to make those more catered to the, kind of what you're already looking at for comparisons. This year, we didn't have time to throw that together, but that's definitely something to change in the next year's presentation.
Yeah, we use that a lot because we get compared, we get compared.
Right, yep.
As a community, and to be able to throw back one that actually is comparable.
Yeah, for sure, yep.
Which we, after we had kind of finished our preview on Friday, I emailed Abby and Tom the tax comparison spreadsheet that we use with 17 other cities and that we consider are comparables. Wasika is not a Class III, they're just barely under 10,000, but the other cities are all Class III cities. I think we, this year was challenging for everyone, just with gathering new data and ABDO having to incorporate all that data. And we, I think one thing we, we looked at was the internal transfer of funds that, which we do on occasion internally as staff, but that should all be brought to the city council to approve when we transfer funds from one department to another. Is that, did I explain that halfway?
Yep, so council is technically supposed to approve all inter-fund transfers, any transfer of money between funds. The ones that are budgeted are approved when you approve the budget, but anything that comes up throughout the year needs to go through council to get a resolution. So things like closing funds, just any, any transfers that come up during the year. So, yeah, just some different things with new auditors who usually find, find a few things to improve upon, but it was great working with Steve and Deb and, yeah.
The Class III data that you presented, are those classes that, where did you get that data? Is that, are those Class III cities that you work with yourself, or did you go through? I mean, where do you get that information?
The state releases information. So you might have noticed that we don't have 2022 data for the peer groups. The state releases everything a year later, but we like to see the trend. So we take a whole spreadsheet of every city in Minnesota and then filter it by population and then with county as well to get that. And a lot of your peer group that you do look at are the Class III. It's just next year, getting rid of some of those outliers or some of those ones that might skew the data a little bit.
Okay.
Well, we were very impressed working with the ABDO, and they do a very thorough job and, and hope to continue that working relationship with them.
We appreciated working with you.
Yep.
Awesome. If any questions come up, our, our contact information is in that last slide, or Steve and Deb can get ahold of us. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so we're asking council to accept the 2022 annual comprehensive financial report.
Move to accept.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Onto council reports. I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Yesterday, the Cross-Cultural Advisory Committee helped put on the driver's licenses for all event at JBS Fieldhouse. We had, we thought 60 chairs would be more than enough with a few people standing. There were over 160 people there, plus a whole bunch of kids playing in the fieldhouse part, very well attended. It was also recorded. It will be available on various YouTube channels, Facebook, Instagram, whatever. It'll be available for people to reference in the future. Very, very good turnout. We're very pleased with it, so.
Good. Thank you. Chris?
No report.
Okay, Elena?
We had a Prairie Justice Center Joint Committee last week, and we had expressed some frustration with not, this is a joint committee, and we feel like we haven't been getting some of the information from the county. We sometimes read it in different media outlets, telling us basically what happened at the meetings, and then that's all that we hear. So we came to a really good agreement there where we know that we need to be working together. They seem to really understand why we were frustrated on that point. The main point of contention was with the budgeting that came back for the, the building for.
Impound.
Yeah, the impound building. And so we came to an agreement then that we're still going to go out and try to get this building built. We might need to right-size it a little bit if, depending on how numbers come back, but it is not, we are not done with that discussion. It's something that's still happening as we get some of these, some of this pricing back. And then I had a YMCA board meeting today, and the biggest item that we kind of talked about is that the new, that Carrie Olmanson starts next week. And so we're excited to bring her on, have somebody else walk through with a fresh set of eyes and see what we can kind of, you know, revamp with the Y and kind of reinvent it again. But we're excited to have, have her on board next week, and that's all.
Okay, thank you, Elena. Chad?
Just reiterate what, we're still not quite there, but we're pretty darn close to there of having an impound building. And hopefully, within the next two weeks, we'll have final pricing on a couple of components. We opted to say if we need to, to get this thing finally happening, actually happening, to bypass fencing, to get the structure and the groundwork and all of that done, electrical, and we'll worry about the fence once we get all that done and everything comes in total cost and we can see exactly then what fencing we can do or we have to plan for, so.
Okay. Thanks, Chad. Steve?
So I was at the driver's license for all for a while, and then I went down to Busfield for the championship soccer, and that was a big crowd down there. We had a conference call last week with Ellers discussing bonding strategy, which we're looking at at the October 9th council meeting. We're going to bring forward a resolution to call for bonds. What we are looking at the best strategy is to bond for the remaining revenue of sales tax revenue that we have to do another sales, a bond for just under $10 million. Majority of that will be sales tax revenue supported, and then we'll have about $3.3 million additional bonded that will go back into the Construction Improvement Fund. That, as you saw, that fund has been drawn down. We haven't bonded in that, for those funds, for four years now, so we're a year or two later than we typically are. So we'll have that worked out here by the, by the next meeting. Wednesday, several members of Minnesota Senate Housing and Homeless Prevention Committee are driving through Worthington, are going to stop here for an hour or so. We'll see if we have any solutions. I have plenty of solutions, none of which really fall within their priorities, so we'll, we'll see how that meeting works out. After Worthington, they're going to Wyndham, then on to St. Peter, just doing a little southwest Minnesota tour.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Is it? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.